Yeah, let's get started. Going on here. I'm at why don't you go ahead real quick and we'll.
Yes, John. Uh so like today I work on the problem which you sent me business hour was so enclosed uh when it should be open also. So I did one that so what was the problem? So problem was due to uh business hour format. We're getting from that Google is not always consistent. So it is different, different. So like I handle those business hour also. So now it will be fixed. So yeah, I deploy I committed that code. And J D F that request, so we can test it.
Okay, so the form. I mean, the format. Had the hours as you saw in the screenshot, but then.
Yes, yes, yes. But like uh it is the indifferent like like it has two hours, like two slots working. Like eight to twelve and like the two two nine thirty something that now that. So due to that, we are not able to calculate the their uh opening hours.
Okay, um so you got that?
Yes, yeah, I fixed that dedicated for the question for it. So Jerry also approved it. So we will uh I think we can deploy on the product Jerry.
Uh you wanna test it?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, test it first.
Uh so I tested it on like Q A after your deployment.
Uh yeah, sure, we can push it up.
And apart from that, I work in writing test cases. Uh if there will be any more tasks, you can assign to me, John.
Hmm okay, sounds good. So I mean, I sent you a couple messages and then I. Sent some into development. First, let's start with the. The plus one, is that a pretty easy fix to uh for the formatting?
Yeah, it should be. It should be easy.
Okay, I don't think Android has the number on the keyboard. So we did, we went ahead and released eighty one on Android. So I wanted to start getting some tests and stuff. But for I O S, we uh we just will just not release that one because I don't wanna have a problem on onboarding. But but then what about the uh? The situation with this keyboard, I it the more I've watched the session replays, I'm. Convinced it's gotta be. Either the keyboard isn't invisible, like not there or it's there, but the inputs don't work.
I had I highly thought that like it's that it's not invisible. Because I I don't we we can see from this issue replay because it like this issue they doesn't like uh like record it. But we can see if like the inputs are high or the button are high. Also, like I did add more login to the keystrokes. So you know, like I logged every keystroke the user do in a in the name field. Or like the phone or the SMS field. With with this eighty one, I'm not sure. Like I just like I did a uh search for the social place that we have with the latest version. Only found one hmm that like that has like the keystrokes logs. That I only find one that was on the other other system replaced. They were not like in the onboarding. They were just home or other stuff. But this one, it was like the only one that I saw with on in onboarding and in the name field. And yeah, the keystrokes, they won't be unlocked. Um. So yeah, I hadn't thought that. But you mentioned context re-rendering. Yeah, could be uh but again, how? If there's like a re-rendering, how it's gonna like um if 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 like there's a rendering. Things will be like reset. Like let's say the user on the name field, he typed three letters and if a render happen. It will just clear that all what the user type uh typed in. But yeah, um.
Get it? I need more information. What's going on there? I'm just curious. I think I'm just a little behind on what the problem is.
Well, the whole problem like users are not able to onboard like this stuck on the phone SMS.
Yeah, I'm a name.
Okay, that's actually interesting. Um what's the behavior? Do you have a session replay of that?
Many, many. Yeah.
Like also like we did a lot of fixes with the eighty one. You might be like looking into issues that we might fix with eighty one vision.
Possibly.
So you know, be looking at.
It felt something interesting. I don't know how 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 this. Uh if this is related or not, but when when the user can't, let's focus on the name when the user can't. Proceed on the name, what's the behavior we're seeing?
Flicking all over the place.
Ah, okay, I know what that is. I know what's causing it. Um cuz it happened to me this morning. I opened my simulator, my I O S simulator, and it was just like uh the lot he keeps replaying, right? And then the cursor is like going crazy.
Okay.
So.
This is on um an I O S simulator?
So this is on I O S, but but the reason for that was because. Of the code in where that use effect that hides the keyboard, but the blur. So. Hmm let me see, so uh.
I just I just dropped one of them in there. Now, this one is a little unusual. This person is using. A Motorola. A Motorola Moto and the device model is Moto G stylus. And I don't know what I know what a stylus is. So I don't know exactly what a Motorola stylus is like. I'm not sure if they have an actual little pen. They're using, but it's a four four minute, nah, three minute. They're trying like they're all popping all over the place. They're able to get like a few little letters to type. It's weird, a really weird situation.
This one's different, but what I can tell you is, and I'm not sure if this is like relevant or not, but for example. When we have the on the keyboard listener, if if keyboard is hidden. We have the basically the the blur, the first name blur and then first name focus. To basically force them to to force them to show it, right? I mean. So I so I know this is on a simulator, but check this out. If I've. Forced the keyboard to hide here, it will create that flickering. Um so what I'm trying to say is maybe if. Certain devices don't support don't support that blur or doesn't behave the way you'd expect it to. You're gonna run into something.
Like, but how you force the keyboard to not be there?
I oh I I well, I'm saying this is on my simulator cuz it's you can just. So what I'm saying is maybe other keyboards. Do not respond to that code as you'd expect for like for like specific devices. For whatever reason, maybe like the native code, like you know how blur and focus probably call native code eventually? It doesn't work properly on those devices, so it gets stuck in a loop. So this is how it would look like. So it's gonna look something like this. See how it's flickering and it's going crazy. Now, as soon as that keyboard comes up. We're good.
Yeah, if watch, if you put your cursor in the last name field, you'll you'll see the lot of re-render. Go up and down between them. There.
Oh, there's also that, um which um. Hmm, let me see. By commenting this code. Let's see if that still happens. Uh does still happen.
And this is on an iPhone. Okay, what I sent into development yesterday was only a small amount of information. It's a known defect on Android. There's a lot more that I I just didn't include. But it's a known, I I can read the key parts, but it's a known defect. That, yeah, let's see what's happening there with the cursor.
Yeah, so that that's that's because, like I said, that when you hide the keyboard. So the keyboard is not able to pop up for whatever reason. Like if you manage the if you manage to hide the keyboard, if if any of the Android. Systems manages to hide the keyboard one way or the other. Even though we're supposed to not allow it technically, but if some of them are handled differently, it would create that effect.
Yeah, and it it keeps referencing this race condition. Re-render happens can in some cases it can happen so quickly, user doesn't see the visual flicker. However, on the native side, the re-rendering process can interpret the asynchronous task of displaying the keyboard. A split second re-render can cause the text input to lose to lose and immediately regain focus. Or it can cancel the keyboard's native display command entirely. That's one thing, uh when I started the conversation here. It started with. Let's go back to. My first question was about this Moto stylus thing and um. The text input state is being handled incorrectly. One of the most common issues on Android devices is a race condition where the text input. Input is cleared before the state can be updated. This often appears as a flicker and makes typing impossible.
Well, I think, like I said, the flicker is on the series can do. Well, i- is there? Any of the screen recordings where you saw the flicker was was the keyboard up or down? And you would know that if 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 the if this was laying down here or up.
You are, yeah, I know. And sometimes it's down like that, which should be impossible. And there are screens, there are accessory plays where it's there, not necessarily even on the screen, like it could be the phone input screen.
It doesn't matter. They all have the same thing where let's say I get past this one right uh.
Yeah, like the phone input screen, it could I've seen it's down and I'm not sure how they got it down. And then, but what I kept prompting it to to see. Is it possible for that whole component to be up? Without a keyboard, according to Gemini, it is possible. In fact, probable.
Yeah, so if you can see here, um we're having a lot of weird behavior. First of all, I guess I'm unable to type. Oh, I guess cuz I'm using my phone. That should be technically impossible on a physical device, but still, I don't know. We should probably handle that. Um but that being said, yeah, you can see that. It it's gonna behave a little different if. Uh may I think I I think we 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 have basically the same logic where if the like. The same logic on the name we have it here, right? Right? I mean, where it's technically impossible to. Have the keeper doesn't wanna come back up now.
Yes, it's the same logic, yeah.
Yeah, so uh so I think that's what's causing the re-renders. If a device. But if a device if a device somehow somebody manages to hide the keyboard. Uh yeah, you're gonna get some very funny behavior. Um because of that blur focus, lot of mechanism which. Which I know why you added, but I'm just saying it could have that side effect if the native device hides the keyboard if it finds a way.
Okay, simultaneously, I have another real time problem, Jerry.
Yeah.
Let me send you this conversation. This person's trying to get into the um. The uh South Africa chat. She's saying she can't. I just asked her what she means. She sent me a screenshot. Critical error. Take a look at that.
I guess I could find their session replay, but that's.
We'll start start with that. I wanna multitask. I feel like we're getting bombarded. With problems right now and I wanna keep everybody lean. So yeah, see if you can find out. So sorry, go ahead, it's real.
Uh no, it's pretty much all I have to say. What I'm what I'm trying to say is um if if. If the native. O S, whatever it is, finds a way to hide the keyboard or the keyboard starts off by hiding. So if it's different from, you know, Samsung, it's it's different from I O S, obviously, then you'll get you'll 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 be stuck in that loop. So it's and I begin the same logic implies here, obviously. So. Just one thing to consider.
When when you say stuck in a loop. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, stuck in that like re-render. Well, cuz like cuz there there's gonna be a user effect that keeps triggering. It keeps blur focus, blur focus, blur focus, just keeps triggering.
Gonna say that. So we did that this thing to have the keyboard always up. Because we were having problems of users are not able to proceed the name field or the name state. So we were like, maybe they don't have the keyboard up or like they don't know how to bring the keyboard up. Then we did this. And so my question like. We did did we have like the same issues before, if you remember?
Maybe, yeah, maybe would in would context be the blame for it. It it let me let me share my screen.
I don't think it's like, I'm not saying that of the picture, but with contacts. Before being up or down.
It's like. According to this, like the terrible, terrible idea to use it for A- Android. It's like we're not, it's not gonna have any problems on I O S. But and that's what I'm seeing. Like if you look at the session replays for the last few days. There are far, far, far more people not making it through onboarding than actually make it through onboarding. It isn't same. Like it's cra- it's like an epidemic of people not making it through.
What that's ever since what build?
Well, I wanna go back and look further, but it seems like it's more so since I've been. Attracting more international users and which means more Android. Cuz in the past, it was mostly all I O S and I wasn't really seeing these issues. So then we may, let me let me start with some of the um, can you guys see my screen? Am I sharing? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Tell me if any of this rings true to anybody uh like. Does this issue here, if you if you're if you're update, if you update your state using the on change text?
They start typing, which is in in the case we see it's. So on changes when you actually type something, then it reacts to it. But in the case we see, are they not? Is it before where they start typing or after?
I can't tell if they're typing, for one thing. I don't see any, there are many, many session replays I'll see with no typing at all, like there's tapping all over the place. But not not a single letter. And it's really weird. So um I don't know, it's so I went a little deeper because. Are we using or could it be possibly this second thing here? Keyboard avoiding view, do we use this, I mean?
No, we don't. We don't use that um. That component, but but we use other other libraries to handle the keyboard, so we don't use this.
Potentially native UI component library conflict. Any of this seem like it could relate?
Well, there's only one input, there's only one native fixed input. And that's what we're using and like like in the whole we act natives ecosystem, there's only one which is the text input. The issue with the placeholder never heard of it could be. I don't see how placeholder text goes in line breaks and then we run the input. I don't see like the placeholder there, it's like. Straightforward. Like we don't do in we don't manage related in any way.
Well. We could, now there's a suggestion on how to debug. And um. I just still wasn't thinking I went deep enough, so I went I got a little bit more detailed on air. You can see my question. This is this is where. I started getting more, felt like I was getting warmer. And I don't know how, I mean, are we, would you consider us using complex UI components or state management? I mean, con- context in general. And if I could jump ahead. I went to, I'll go back to that, but I asked the question here. Our onboarding is technically all on one screen since it's architected using context. Could that be a contributing factor? Yes, architecting the entire onboarding process using the single context could absolutely be. I never, I don't think I ever seen um. A I say absolutely. Could absolutely be a contributing factor to the keyboard issue, particularly on Android. Devices. Specific race condition where the input field focuses, but the keyboard doesn't appear is a known symptom. Of excess re-rendered caused by context. This is the part that really like made me go, aha. It's a known. Condition. So as I was reading more. You know a lot about React, I mean, does this ring true to you here, this stuff?
I mean, yeah, if you're using the React context without like being cautious. You could be causing the renders, but I don't think. Like the pre-odd screens, we're not relying on that context. Yeah, it's like it's there. But that context is not being used cuz like what we do, like for example, the name, the birthday. We don't do much with that React context. We just like save the name. In that context and take the user next, save the name and take the user next. We're not like be, oh, if this is happening, try to do this, or this is happening, try to do this, like there's not.
It'll say on here um.
But yeah, I'm not I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it. There is not problem there. I'm just saying how it is right now, so we just like have the same.
Yeah, here's what I thought was interesting. So. Cuz this is the accessory places are seem to me that even on this very first step, there is something happening that is they can't see. The part that really um. Made me nervous here is like. If the user just simply taps in the name field, this triggers two events. Native focus. The Android system is told to focus the input and display the keyboard and then react state change. Control input. If your text input is control, a control component, I don't know the answer to that. Do you know the answer to this or here?
I mean, yeah, we control it through a state.
If it is, which if it is, then it gains focus and it stays as update, which immediately triggers the context wide re-render. This work gets really crazy.
No, 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 no. If that state, if the if if that state causing. So when they, when we call the the own text change, if that function is calling something that's causes. Uh the state of the context changed, then yeah, not like all of it, but some of the component that I rely on that specific state. So it's not like the whole thing we ran this is only what it needs to be re-rendered. Um but yeah, maybe there's a leak somewhere and also like we still in the ne- the the name step, so. If there is like a re-rendering happening, it will look as like when Ismail was showcasing. Like the last year will replay that for sure.
Yeah, then that that I can make happen, like I told him, just to tap into the the last name field, it re-renders. That I can make happen consistently every time. And don't forget, he's on an iPhone emulator. We don't have a problem on iPhones. And this, if you read this whole thing, I read every word of it. If you read all of this, the problem is not iPhones. The problem is Android, and that's exactly what I'm seeing. I'm seeing Android after Android after Android not getting in. There's a part here where. I'm missing it, but it was like literally every type of a bu- of a keystroke.
So, okay, let's let's go with the theory. It's the context.
Yes.
What we can do about it is like. Not to have like at least like the pre-odd steps.
Yes.
To not be inside the context, we find a way to not have them there. You're gonna be just the steps.
Uh yeah, exactly. You're going where I was going with in my mind, which is.
Yeah, if and and we see if it's causing a problem cuz like right now, like. This is why it's hard, like we don't have enough data or not like because like if we wanna debug it in our environment, because it's different than what's. The user perceiving cuz uh so we go with this theory, we we do a fix, we do this. To not have think this to be in context and test it and see how things are gonna be.
Right, I was going the same place because. Why even risk it? And it was E J haunting us from the past. Like I really never liked the idea of that. Because it sounded really radical to do it that way. Um he made it sound like, oh, no, it's easy. I do it all the time. It's totally normal, but I've never heard that since then from anybody. And here, when everything I'm reading here, like if you like, if you read this, context is not optimized for frequent changing state. This is the part that. Freaks me out right here. Update on every keystroke.
No, uh I would say, let me see.
The React contacts API is designed for managing state that changes infrequently, like a theme, user authentication status or global preferences and not optimized. State management solution for rapidly changing state such as text input. And we are using text input, which updates on every, again, this is Android specific.
We don't, we don't set the context on it on um on every keystroke.
Like we what if we what how what if Android is doing this and you don't realize it?
I'm I'm looking to the code. There's no like separate things for I O S or um. Or Android.
Context, uh John, just to clarify also is something we add. It's like a state we add. It's it's not something that happens automatically.
It's it's all React code that's compiled to both I O S and Android. So I can confirm, John, we don't save the the state. Um on every keystroke, it's only when the user press the pink button. That's when we have like a final name.
I I think if you read all this, you'll think differently.
No, yeah, and I I I agree with what's Gemini says, but like we don't do that. Like we're not saving to the. Maybe it's medical law can drink a look again to the code.
Read read this part right here and tell me what this means. When you update any piece of state within your context provider, React will re-render all components that consume that context regardless. Of whether they actually use the updated state value.
This is true. This is true, but we don't do that. And that's what this is true. We save to the context, we write to the context. Only when you use a press on the next button. So let's say, yeah, this is a problem. This is like uh. But if that problem gonna like show any issue, it's gonna be when the user press the next button. Because that's where we call that code that writes to the context. On every keystroke, we don't write to the context.
Unless we create a race condition that we're not aware of.
Yeah, that's what I said. Like maybe there's a leak there or risk condition that we're not aware of, but like writing to the context on every keystroke. We 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 don't like, I I I'm following the code and maybe if you smell can look at it again or Jerry. Like it's everything it's in the onboarding name file. So. Yeah, I'm I'm looking through again and again, like. The so on change called back. We only like sits to the local state of that step, so. Yeah, I I don't see we write the content.
Looking at this different issue too while we're talking, but um.
Are you done with the person not able to get into the chat?
Yeah, what's going on in here?
I found the uh an error log concentrated from what what appears to be their user account. It's like, did she try to upload an M P four or something into that chat like it? So she like tried to upload a video and maybe she deleted the video and what's happening is. So she like tried to upload a video and maybe she deleted the video and what's happening is. She's trying to load into the chat and, and from what I believe is happening is the app saw that he, she had like a partial upload and is trying to find that video which she now deleted. And it's not handling it properly and it's crashing anytime she tries to open up the chat. Enough fire affects that chat because I would say the local storage affects only that, you know, only specific to a group. So the solution is, is long-term, I think it needs to be handled.
Yeah.
In the event and short-term, I think she's just gonna have to reinstall or, or clear her app cache or something.
Okay. So maybe this something Ismail needs to be aware of.
Yes.
I thought we didn't release with. I guess we did release with a lot of stuff that Ismail was working on. We got a problem with the video upload potentially. Did you, did you see her try to do a video upload? Is that right, Jerry?
Yeah, I see that she tried to do it and then it was, there was an error while uploading. And I guess I'm going to assume I don't notice, but maybe she deleted the video from her video library after the fact. And then she went back to the app and the app was like, oh, I see you tried to upload a video. Let me try to re-upload it. And it's like, where, where is the video?
Like you mean video library, like from her phones, um, get photos or? So it's trying to. Okay, it was still trying to grab it from there?
Yeah, we're trying to find something that doesn't exist anymore.
That seems unlikely. Well, that's possible, huh?
It says, it's like data path and then it says that does not exist.
Uh, yeah, I mean, when it. So if it fails, when she opens it and then she clicks on the retry, yeah, it's gonna reference the path of the video that so she deleted it. It's gonna, it's not gonna find it.
Okay.
And we can't store the video locally on the app, obviously because it's too big.
Okay. I want to try and find out. She's talking to me right now and it's not easy to get these people to talk to me all the time. So that's why I'm interrupting.
So.
She did, she did try to upload a video. Let me ask her. Okay. One second, one second. Did you try to? Or did you delete it?
Another thought might be maybe, maybe she like used the take photo video thing. Like she took it within the app and it didn't save.
Let's find out. Well, she's not typing at the moment, but she did say, yes, she. She did try to upload a video into the chat. So you got that part right.
And we don't see her video in the chat. So that means the video did not get uploaded.
Okay, she's typing now. Cool that I can see when people are typing. Um, okay. So while I'm waiting for her, let's stay in the zone here on the other thing. She said, I tried, but then that popped up. So I said, okay, did you delete that video soon after I, so she tried to delete it. Should I ask her if she tried to delete it from Circle or try to delete it from her own library?
Did, did she, how did she select the video? Did she like capture the video in the app or did she select it from her photo library? And then the next question would be is since then, has she tried, has she deleted the video?
I, I, I don't think we kept her videos in the app. I think we just kept her pictures at the.
Yeah, you can't, you can't do it that way anyway. So I won't ask that.
Yeah. So then, then the next question would be just, yeah, uh, did she attempt to delete the video since?
From her lat- from her phone, not from Circle.
Okay. Okay. So like from her phone's library.
Yep.
Making it really clear. So hopefully I get the right answer. Okay. We are doing a lot of things all at once. So I mean, um. I, uh. I don't know. The more I was reading about this, it just seems like context. Is doomed. Like you should, we shouldn't be using it. For onboard in your city.
Yeah, if you ask my option, um, my personal opinion, I would say no, not use it because context like it's easy to, to like, to cause issues with it. It's completely, because it's so basic. You have to do a lot of things together, right? So if you ask me, yeah, I know not to use it, but here, I don't see how it's causing a problem. But yeah, again, maybe there's something else that we're not looking at. And we can go and have at least the first four or five steps to not to be inside the context. Only after the user is authenticated, just to confirm this theory.
Yeah, okay. I think. Yeah, I think context is causing a problem on Android. In any of these. Possibilities, you're saying you, you, you think we are handling. There's like no, you, from your perspective, it's not likely that any of this is going on. You know, like a no, you don't real, you don't suspect a race condition could occur?
Um. Tracks, device specific works. I don't know, like maybe at the late stage update because those Android devices, they're not performing very well. And there's like things happening in the wrong timing. Yeah, that could be. Bug that and to find the solution for it's gonna be like really tricky.
And Ismail was saying something about the blur here.
Mm-hmm. Well, well, what we do, yeah, the blur is, that's how we, um, make the keyboard be visible again. So it's like needed to focus in the blur. Those two things are needed. So to, if, if the user dismisses the keyboard somehow, as Ismail was, uh, showcase it. We need to call those two functions. Um, those blur and focus are like native functions. They are not like a third party library or anything. So those are like native stuff. Maybe again. They're happening in a timing, a wrong timing or something like that where. Yeah, the order is changed where it should be like blur then focus. It's like focused and blur, maybe. Uh, but I, I, I don't know how to, um, to confirm it because like. Either we had to add real extensive login right now.
Or we could watch context.
Yeah.
Right. I, I, yeah. Let me finish messaging this girl back. One, one second. I mean, or sorry, Jerry, should I tell her she must delete circles and reinstall it?
So you said, did she say that she deleted?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You can't read my mind. She says, yeah, she wanted to delete it from circles messages, but couldn't. So she did, went and deleted it from her photo library.
Ah, so yeah, she's gonna have to, I would say she, she tried to clear her hash and that might have her log back in.
Or, sorry, uh, what was the problem also? Like the, the main? Like what, what did she experience? What was the bug?
Critical error. Um, here I'll send it to you and.
Error, like her app crashed, do you mean?
Check, um, check the development chat. I posted a century log. And that century log has a crash. Because she got into a chat and then like the cache that tries to resume and upload. Tried to find a video file in her library that does not.
She basically closed the app before the, uh, the video was finished uploading.
Well, actually I think she had like a network error. If it looks like she had a network error trying to upload the first time and then she like deleted it. From her library and then she came back in and we tried to re-attempt the upload.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was nothing to be found.
She has a remove and a retry. Now let me remember if, if we're meant to upload and you come back. You would hit with the message was failed. It shouldn't try it automatically. She should tell the user, do you want to retry to upload it or do you want to remove it?
Well, if even if it says message failed. To show that the message failed, it's going to try and find a video. It can't find.
I guess so.
So I'm gonna tell her to delete circles, right?
Well, yeah, that would probably clear the cache and fix it, but we, yeah, we have to find a solution for those, for that situation.
Well, obviously yes, but for in her case, because she's helping a lot, which I appreciate and I don't want her to.
Yeah. Flashing up. So all of those stuff gets tricky. Yeah, yeah, I think that's exactly what happened. Because we need that video to show the, the kind of, uh, the, what's it called? The thumbnail. Indicating what she's trying to retry or remove.
Mm-hmm. So. Time and edge case because she deleted it while it was in progress.
No, it's, yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it causes if you delete a video. While before, i- if you like, yeah, fails, the video fails, then you delete it and you re, then you, then you open the app again.
Yeah.
Um, which I guess is not necessarily edge case. I think it could happen quite a bit. Thinking about it now, like sometimes you want to sense, share something in circles and maybe your phone is low on memory, which happens to most iPhones.
Okay, okay. Um. But you know how to handle it or you, at least you know.
I know what the problem is. I need to figure out a good way to handle it.
Okay, let's go back to this situation and let's get your input as well, Ismail. But I think, I mean, coming to the conclusion. Same thing I was thinking too is like, why even bother risking? This is onboarding. I don't want to risk anything. I want the most stable, reliable, try and true, historical. Um, traditional way of onboarding. With no, I don't want anything fancy. Like I, I don't mind having some nice animations and stuff, but we should still do them best practices. And, um. If context could lead to these problems, then there's, we don't need it. So. That takes me another question. What, what does that mean for us? Like the whole onboarding is built using context. Is it possible to keep the back half? The backup of onboarding seems to be fine. Like once people get authenticated, there's no more keyboards. Well, actually there are. Actually there are and maybe they're actually, you know what? Maybe I have seen some problems. Now that I think about it. I often wondered, why are they stuck? There. Like at the build circle trust, like I've seen it where I'm like, why are they seem like they're stuck here? Or when they, you know how you can, uh, use a search bar on the building, the circle of trust? I, I've seen people struggling there and I'm like, why are all of a sudden they're struggling there? Um, okay. Which means maybe we shouldn't be using context at all in onboarding. What, what do you think I mean?
I mean. Yeah, again, I personally, I don't like to use context, uh. But again, with the border, onboarding and everything. We need to, just to confirm it because it's not gonna be easy. Not just to, it's not like a line of code. We're just gonna delete. But it's everything based on that. So it's gonna require like, I would say like two, three days of work. Then we're gonna do a test, then we're gonna have to test a lot of things, side effects is gonna appear that we have to fix again. So at least it's gonna be like a seven days of work just to get something. Again, as it was before. So for that, I, I'm like, not like to go nuts with it. Does we do? Like the two, three steps, the first one, so we can give it working in two days, three days, something like that. And we confirm. And it's not then, yeah, we can not have the context for other screens.
How would we, how do we confirm it though?
Uh, we're gonna do a build and we wait on users and see if like our onboarding like conversion is hi- higher than it was than. Like people are proceeding at least or just from the situation we place, we can see if the people are proceeding, uh, fine with the name. Birthday and phone and this and instead, because if they are like acting on the replays as, as, as we are expecting from them.
It's really hard to tell. The replays are so difficult to watch because there are huge gaps in them. So you know, like. I've never seen this. With a short amount of digits. That's weird. How does that happen?
So I'm, I'm still, I'm like, I, I feel like we still have missing information in terms of when the user does not onboard, what's the problem they're having? Like, are they typing in the, in the text field?
Oh, here's the situation. There are so many problems that people will get stuck on different phases of it. So like. I mean.
Also, I, I wanna add something that I wanted to say. Like maybe the people I would say, like in this case, like this, this user here is stuck in the, in the, like, there's nothing here, just a button. Maybe he's like, he opened the app, I got like interrupted by his friend or something. He's doing, he's like, he's not really fully focused.
Of course.
Cause like why it will be like 10 seconds, 30 seconds.
That's, that's, yeah, that, I'm, yeah, I count for that. Um, it's the people that come back four times, like if I already put this, uh, uh, key here. There's only one, but I'll see many where there's four attempts over four, five hours. They keep coming back and trying. That's how I know they're struggling. Struggling on the same name screen over and over. Like I've seen that many times. So yeah, this person's not doing anything, right? And then now they did. So, but. Um, like where's the cursor? Why do they have to tap inside there?
Like you, you can see there's delays. Like just say that Jay just appeared. Normally you see.
Exactly. That's, that's what I mean by session replay is not really helpful. This guy seems to have no problem. First of all, this guy's in the United States. And he's on a newer Samsung. Uh, semi newer Android OS. So this isn't, well, I just grabbed this one at random. This isn't necessarily a problem.
This one was able to, uh, because you can see the user.
So let's try one. Some of these are so short. It's like, obviously this is probably on them. Five seconds. Six seconds, six seconds, three seconds. That doesn't help me. Five seconds, one second. So there's a lot of that. Twenty-six seconds, maybe. This person's in Sacramento. See, how do they get the keyboard down? See.
With, with the, the hardware button. He was, he was doing. Cause like, this is an Android, but you can see the keyboard is, is up again.
You don't know that. Uh, that's what I thought too. But if you read, um.
No, like there's a hardware button on, on the Android phone.
I know that. I'm saying we don't know.
We don't know if it's that or the race.
Yeah, right. If you, if you believe this. Right here, the key, um, on Android. In, uh, focus, but the keyboard doesn't appear.
I would say in his case, the keyboard did appear because the, if you go back to the screen, the, it's all pushed up.
Yeah, but I, 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 I was asked, look, this is a re-render, see. Um, I asked that because it seems like, okay, it's up because this is all up here, but that was my specific question. That I posed. Our onboard is technically all on screen since it's using context. Could that be a contributing factor? Let me get back to the.
You're kind of asking Gemini without having access to the code. So that could also lead to a lot of theories that.
Sure, I am asking. Sure, I am asking.
True, and like, as a, as a fact, like, we, like, you could throw a statement, it's like, it's true, what it's saying is right, but does it apply to us? So it doesn't have that factor.
Right, um, that's why it's, it's possible, so it's possible that an invisible, unperceptible re-render is happening on the very first step, causing the keyboard issue, this is a common and subtle side effect of using a single large React context. And.
Again, the only reason I say this is not super helpful, it's like, I'm telling you, yeah, it's possible your car is making a loud noise because it's low on oil. But I didn't open the engine, I don't look under the hood, but it's possible, so it's kind of something like that where it's, it's true, but is it really the case for us?
Yeah, so the, I mean, according to this, it's possible, so like, right, it might not be applying to us. But it's, it is definitely possible that they don't see the keyboard. So, if you believe this, the re-render happens so fast, the visual state of the component remains unchanged, the user sees no visual update, the text input still appears focused as a cursor, but the system level command to bring up the software keyboard was effectively swallowed or canceled by the re-render. And there's another part here where it says, um.
Okay, so I have more information on that re-render.
Okay.
Every time the user tries to hide the keyboard, I'm running it on my simulator right now, it will trigger every render. It will trigger a re-render on the screen. Ooh, but that doesn't mean they still can't type, that just means it will trigger a re-render, so.
And what, and what did you do to trigger it?
Here, I'll show my, I'll show you. So, uh, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is Android, I'm gonna click on this down hardware arrow.
Yeah.
It'll do that, and that will cause a re-render, if I do it again, it will cause a re-render, yeah, I can still type.
Yeah, you can on here, but other people lose their cursor.
Hmm, did that person lose his cursor?
There's so many, let's take a look, um, but I've seen it where there's, the problem is, I don't know if they lost the cursor or session replay just isn't catching it because it flashes, and maybe the frame that session replay sends me back is where it's flashed off, but I can tell you many session replays, there is no cursor in either one of these, and I'm watching them tapping here, and I never see a cursor.
Hmm, well.
Doesn't mean for sure there's no cursor.
I'll see, that's kind of unlike, like, I, I don't think the session replay and the cursor are in sync to that extent where it catches literally the same second the cursor flickers, seems unlikely to me.
Like, you'll see the session replay playing one second, two seconds, three seconds, and you'll never see a flash.
But the keyboard is up, interesting.
Think it's up, yeah.
But we, we, we know, if, if it's, if this is pulled up, so if the keyboard hides, it's gonna be down. There's no way for this to be up unless the keyboard is pushing it down. Add, so if this is up, i- if this is pushed up, I can with certainty tell you that based on my knowledge, the keyboard is ninety percent up, um. Obviously, you can never say a hundred, because you never know with software, but yeah, there's the, the, I would say if I was too bad on, I would say it's, it's up, and if I'm seeing the cursor, that's something else.
Is, is this, is this true, text input updates on every keystroke, is this true?
Input needs to be updated on keystroke to show the latest like.
We're asking for trouble, right, so context is not optimized for frequently changing.
Okay, uh, uh, I mean, I mean, we're not saving to the context on every keystroke, we're not doing that.
So context has, is like irrelevant when someone's typing, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's.
How, how, how do you make that happen?
We, we can control it, because you have the context, you, you, you control when to write to it and when you read to it. We're not writing to the context on every keystroke, like, we know if a keystroke happens, we have that. And we don't write to the context on every keystroke, we, we don't do that. It's only we write to the context when the user press on the next button. I'm like one hundred percent of it, sure, like, I'm. Even if we do that, like, let's say we, which, yeah, we're not doing it, but even if we did that, you would still see the text appear on the screen, it's, it would probably re-trigger. A lot, but it would, the text will still pop up, even if we were doing it, which we're not.
Okay, let me prompt this further, so we don't write to context on every keystroke, and why, why, why are you sure of that, again?
The code, the, the code is written like that.
Yep, like specifically. Is like, how do you decouple, like, how, why, why is this thinking it's coupled?
I'm not sure I understand it, but like, um.
Well, the React context API is designed for managing state that changes frequently, you know, it's not optimized state management solution for rapidly changing state such as text input, which updates on every keystroke. But how are you decoupling keystrokes?
Okay, so the context, it's not like agnostic to what your type of your state, context, think of it, it's like you have a like a big box that contains the state, whatever it is, you can derive by bringing the state from wherever you want and save it to the context, just thinking of just like a big box, so that's why it's like, it's not like the context is bound to a way to the text input, it's the user, the, the coder who, who chooses to bound that context to the input, to a button, to whatever he wants to, so we're not bounding into a text input in here.
Okay, what about this?
You wanna add more, say like, we have a local state that.
Yeah, this part here, um, where was I just reading? Your approach, it's saying, this is, you know, doesn't know for sure, but your approach treats the entire onboarding flow as a single global state, right, because that's context.
Hmm.
Yeah, and it's every, every char- every single character user types into the name field triggers a re-render of the entire component tree nested within your context provider, is that not true, we're not, are we not?
That's only if we say, write into the context on every keystroke, we're not doing that, so we don't have this problem. If you wanna add more, you can say like, we have a local state for the name. And we only write to the context when a user press on the next button. So, yeah, only when the user presses the next button, and by that, we transfer for, what, it's, what's in the local state to the React, uh, to the, to the context.
And we only what?
We only write to the context when the user presses the forward button, so, y- yeah, no, there's no we only, it's like, you can add like, um, yeah, yeah, that.
We, to the, to the, I don't, I can't quite.
Yeah, so, yeah, like, um, we only write to the context when the user presses the forward button, and by that, we transfer the local state to the React context.
Local state to context?
Yep.
Yeah, I think this is validating that it might be rare, but not guaranteed, um, s- stable. Right, because we're talking about older phones, older operating systems, third-party library, like different keyboards, all kinds of different devices and thing. Are you, can you see my screen?
Yeah, I can, I'm, I'm reading, and yeah, that's all I said, like, maybe because those users have, they don't have really good phones. And things on the executing in the right order as like, in a, like, you know, like a good phone. And also when it's slow, things might, might not be executed at the right time, and it causes the race conditions. It'd be, but like, if we're saying this is the case, then that means we have performance issues, like, regardless if the user has a, like a, like a bad phone or not. Yeah, still, at least be basically perform, perform well with just an input and text, we're not doing crazy stuff here. Just an input and a button.
We, but we are doing crazy stuff, because we're using context, and we're trying to keep the keyboard up at all times and.
But yeah, a- all of that doesn't like require like, um, like, I would say like a, a phone with a four gigabytes RAM will do just fine for this, it's not crazy. Now he's like, maybe a race condition is happening, you know, a screen transition. I don't see how this is now our problem at all.
Well, it could be, I mean, I see problems where people transition another screen, and then they seem like they get stuck all of a sudden.
No, but that's different, I'm talking like, now the user cannot type on the name field, or.
Yes, I, I just see so many issues, I don't just see one.
Yeah, yeah, it could be for other issues, uh, for other, uh, cases, but like, I'm just right now focusing on that this, like, user in the name step, and he cannot proceed.
Okay. So, this can still happen, right?
Yeah, this happening, like, because now we, we, we write to the context, when a user presses on the next button. But again, now these will be in a different screen, if a re-rendering gonna happen, it's gonna happen when the user land on that screen, like I always say, maybe it's, it's just gonna be a delay of a two second, three second on the screen, because things are re-rendering, and you can see with the lot, you will see the lot, it replaces itself constantly.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Like, but.
Remember the keyboard was flickering on the phone input screen? Remember?
That, that, that was related again to the code that was supposed to keep the keyboard al- always up.
Yeah, but maybe fix was a more of a patch, not like a fix, like it masked the problem.
But that's like on the phone, how's that, like, goes to the name screen?
What's the question?
Like, but that fix, it was only for the phone screen step.
Yeah, I, I, I see problems there too. I, I'm seeing, I've watched a lot of session replays, it's trouble everywhere in onboarding on Androids primarily, um. So it's ki- you know, kinda unpredictable. The part that was really baffling is like, why on the name screen, and why, and why would someone try four times in four hours, like? It's not like they're distracted by their friend, they're coming back, you know, and so it tells me there's something wrong on the screen, I don't know what's wrong on the screen, but they're trying, and I see that a lot, so but, but then it may, it occurred to me, well, maybe some of these other problems, like, I see people not pre- like, pressing the forward button, or maybe they think they are on, on other screens and it not like not registering. There's just, there's a lot of different ways people can get stuck. So, if context is to blame, then we shouldn't be using it. You know? What about something like this, confirm the issue, introduce the delay?
Yeah, maybe it's a timeout, and I don't know. I mean, yeah, it's again, if one I like, to confirm it is the issue, then we have to do this code, ship it and wait to see if it's, um.
I know. Yeah, does it solve the problem on every screen?
Hmm, I would say no, because every screen is different, but like that's only if it's really our issue, and I don't think this is our issue. Right now, he's talking about like, the issue had, he says, like, the keyboard is not there because you're trying to transition to another screen. And we don't have problems when, like, I, I'm talking about the user being stuck on the name, like, what, what he's talking about, he's talking about like transition to another screens, whereas like, we're just focusing on user on the name screen, because you mentioned on your prompt that we only save when a user press on next, now, now he's focusing on that stage. So, uh, you need to be like, um, yeah, you need to have, I would say like, here, like, Gemini needs to have some, some, some copy of our code, so maybe he can analyze and see what's going on, can have some context.
You wanna send me some?
Yeah, I can send you that file, like, when we do the name, let's see if he's, is able to.
So, this also would explain why we don't, haven't seen it as much over the years, because most people over here have newer Androids.
Yeah, that, that, that could be a fact that too.
Here's why, this is a known problem, this is the, these are the words that really get me, known problem.
Okay, like, tell him like, where, where have you read it, like, there's a link, yeah, press on it, you see that anchor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Where are you going to fill sluggish on all the devices, okay? Yeah, could be for a lot of various reasons.
How old is this article? Two, twenty-two-five, I guess, bring it. Do we use this?
Yeah, I mean, what is it, it's in like, uh, that's like the first thing that everyone mentioned about React, maybe with that, maybe with this, like, it's.
So, i- is this all you expect, you already understand all this?
He's talking about like lists here, like how to optimize a list.
Right, we're not caring, we don't care about that right now, right? Okay, have a fancy animations.
We, we don't have like, only that lot, hey? So.
Do we have very much nesting happening or modals? That was one of the things I read, is that having the.
I would not say crazy nesting, but I would say like, acceptableness, I'm like, when we have containers, when we need them inputs, yeah, like, I would not say we have like crazy nasty going on, at least with the name with the onboard then, I don't see it.
Would this, uh, help us reveal some other issues?
This is for your, um, This is for your, um, envi- development environment.
Right, no, I know, but would you be able to see basically stuff that's?
Yeah, we have, we have, the flipper one is outdated, it's not used, it's encrypted. But the details is there, then. I mean, it's a tool, if you need to know where the problem is, to tell the tool to help you, other than that's. Like, um.
Okay, this wasn't really like.
Yeah. What about he based on, on, um, answer on this article? It's like, yeah, it's a known problem, he's like sunrise, yeah, now he's summarizing.
There's other, like, there's this one, you know?
Yeah, it could be memory, um, but again, we're not doing. I don't know how was the memory for those users, but for the names on board in. There shouldn't be a lot of things going on that just like the memory, only like we have a leak somewhere and yeah.
This, this could easily be happening because. I am, I, I'm seeing most of these OS, or Android OS. But like, they're almost all like Android ten, I don't know why. Which means they're still using the slower bridge. And.
The bridge has nothing to do with the OS, like the Android OS, if that was your reference here.
Wouldn't it? I mean, doesn't everything need the bridge?
No, 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 the bridge is a thing that's exclusive to React Native. But, yeah, but it has nothing to do with the, the, he, he said like, he still see newer Androids. Look like old Androids that mean they're using the bridge. Oh, the bridges, it's like a React, React Native thingy only, has nothing to do with the OS.
But. Well, wait, oh. So we are using a newer bridge?
No, we, we using our React Native version that we've been using.
Yeah, so when it says, um, older apps and devices rely on the slower, older bridge?
I don't know what he means by devices or older apps, like. Because like, at that point, the older apps, there was only the bridge. The React Native bridge architecture.
Yeah.
But devices? No, like, there's no such thing as like device rely on a bridge.
We're using the more updated version of React Native with a more updated bridge. Even though they might be on Android ten. They're, they're using the better, the improved bridge that we're using, obviously, because it's.
No, there's, there's no improved bridge for Android ten, there's like the same bridge.
That's what I'm saying, they're, they rely on our, our bridge, our bridge is the updated one because we use a newer version of React Native. So this is not an issue.
Yes, yeah, you, you can say that, um.
But it seems like there's a million little ways, there could be like a little.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, I know, there's a million, that, that's why it's, it's gonna be a hard plug too.
Which means we shouldn't even bother, right, trying to. Address every little thi- thing, we just avoid it completely, right? By not using context?
Yeah, um, but not using context doesn't mean. We avoided all the problems now, um. Because maybe we have other problems somewhere, but we say, we just. Saying it could be one of the problems is like, we, we using the context there.
We care about giving it this code?
I don't know, there's nothing crazy there, um.
What components are involved and how are they nested? How was context provided to the onboarding screen?
Well, yeah, this code, it doesn't have everything, this code is. Specifically to the, like, to the name step and I was like, maybe he might be like, um, what's the word? Like, uh, predict how, it's not. I, I would say he will, he will get it because. It will, uh, yeah, he will, he will get it, only if he, maybe he said like, no, give me the context, the code of the context, then we can. Handle it to, to the AI.
So. We're looking at. Basically. Like it's not starting over from scratch, but almost starting over in onboarding? If we wanted to get rid of context, is like a whole new, like, construction of onboarding?
Yeah, well, like the onboarding is gonna be looking and should be even at the same as before, it's just like. The architect inside of it will be different, yeah, um, yeah.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the goal is to, yeah, keep it to look the same, but the reality is. We're tearing down the building and building it back up from the ground up again?
Yeah, like the, the, the ground, yeah, we, we, we're building the ground.
Which brings inherent problems, of course, because. I mean, it's like starting over all the debugging and QA testing and everything, it's all gotta go through all the steps and. And it's been years of using our onboarding, years. Okay, let's see what this says here. So could in combination lead to the issues?
Well, the first thing that he mentioned is like because of the code we added for keeping the keyboard always up and yeah. Uh, we noticed problem with that first time, second time, and also like it's mail onto that, that code.
Yeah.
Because it maybe renders for the users that define the way to dismiss the keyboard.
Yeah. If we, let's say we weren't using context, would this be easier to handle the ke- keep the keyboard up in a safer way?
It has nothing to do with it. It, yeah, this thing to keep the keyboard up has nothing to do with the context.
Yeah, I know, but context is known to have re-renders and problems.
It's known to have renders if you're writing to it, like we're not writing to the context when we're trying to keep the keyboard up.
So the way to ask the question is, are we at the same risk of problems? For the user in their keyboards stage, even without context, same risk level?
Yeah, if it was not the context is the issue, then yeah, it's the same.
Does this sound, when you read this, does it sound like?
Yeah, yeah, that, that code, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's probably causing problem. And maybe those problems, they were not like a, a problem for other devices because they handled and. It's only a problem for, for some devices, because of delays and how the keyboard is handled on older. Android versions, different devices, yeah, this, this could be a.
Yeah, hey, A- Amen, are you here, um, you have an older Android, right, or I don't know, what?
Uh, I have found a newer Android, so. I can, I can, uh, manage older Android also.
You have an older one, could you, um, go to the App Store, there's the Google Play Store? Yeah, and delete, yeah, and then start over fresh, like clear cache and everything first? You got a clear cache on Android?
Currently, no, I need to take that device, I currently, it's not, so you want to test with what device I have currently?
Every Android you have, really, um, new and old, yeah, whatever you've got, I'd like to delete circles, clear your cache. And, um, download it from the App Store and, and then I want, I want you to, uh. Go fast, go back, go forward, go back, go forward, fast, change. Um, tap all over the place, like, really try and break it, I think that's part of the problem is. When we're testing, we're not real, we're like, we know all the steps, we're kind of just following A, B, C, whereas. People in the wild. They can do all, they're gonna do all kinds of stupid things that we're not thinking of, um, so I want you to. Really try and break it, like that's how I discovered the re-render of that lot, he is, I was tapping up and down between the. Input, the name, first name, last name, first name, last name, and all of a sudden I noticed like, oh, it's re-rendering the screen. So, yeah, um. What do you, what are your thoughts, I mean, how, how do we? Proceed?
Sorry, I was talking me out, I would say, A, if we're really thinking it's the context, then. At least we're gonna ditch the context for the pre-op steps. And the, uh. Just to get rid of that code that keeps the keyboard up. Maybe it's causing problem, then, yeah. I mean, there's no way to keep it up, other than. When a user dismiss it, you, you bring it. Like, there's not a way to.
Which, but which is fine, as long as we account for. People doing things quickly, older devices being a little laggy. You know, like, is, you know, maybe we, just, there's better ways to account, like, it sounds like we are accounting. Like, it says your, your component only renders its content after a delay, which is handled by a used delay show, did, did you know that?
Yeah, I know that, that's not a problem, this is like just how we, you know how like we show, we show the lobby, the input?
Yeah, 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 okay.
That's why we use it, it, it has nothing to do with.
It could be a problem because it's in combination. Right?
How, how it, because the, I don't see how this, like.
Combination of a delayed mount and complex animations slide in, right, you mean, can create a narrow window.
If that's gonna be an issue, it's gonna be issue with the animation, maybe the animation is not gonna happen, things are gonna be just shown all at the one time. Or nothing gonna be shown, yeah, but like, how this interfering with the input, that's that I don't see.
Well, it says, when autofocus is called on the first name input, it might be competing. With these other native UI events.
The, it's only the input that has autofocus, the other UI elements, the lot, he doesn't have autofocus.
Yes.
Only inputs, so.
The time, the timing window. Right, this is where we have the problem of older devices.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking that in my mind, even for older devices, I don't see this an issue.
You don't think that could, they could conflict with each other?
With the input or not being focused and not, no, I don't think so.
It might be competing with these other, okay, the native system might get a request to autofocus before. The re-animated layout animations have fully completed, this can cause the focus request to be dropped or mismanaged.
Yeah, if, if that's the case, you will see the keyboard first before anything else.
Because we don't see the keyboard at all, because of session replay, we don't see it.
But, yeah, that's true, so, I mean, if saying this is the case, then. It should be the keyboard first. Then the other elements, and if it's the case, again, session replace is not helpful to know. The user might be typing first, and when the input is appearing. It's either gonna be having, it's, it's, it's gonna have the full thing that was typed out.
What do you mean the full thing was typed out, maybe they can't type at all?
Let's say, let's say the keyboard was first.
Yeah.
Up before the inputs or lot of anything. Let's say the user start typing his name. So when the im- im- first name field appears, it's gonna has the full, the, the name that was typed. After the user, even the input was not visible, because it was delayed, that's if it's the case. Of what Gemini was saying there.
Do we use, we use the keyboard?
Yeah, yeah.
That's another layer.
Of course, you're using, the reason why we use this, because he is saying it, he's a robot, robots, okay? The unknown library for handing keyboard. Um, and yeah, of course, it's gonna add another layer, otherwise, you're gonna add the layer to handle the keyboard.
The, yeah, we're just, we're doing too much. Adds another asynchronous operation to the event loop right as the input receives focus. Timing inconsistently, the added delay, even a small one, could theoretically interact. With the native events related to keyboard display, especially on older or more heavily loaded devices, which is what we're seeing, we're not seeing. On brand new shiny, low, plenty of memory phones. Okay, recommended plan. Remove the use effect of blur. This is the most likely and most dangerous part of your code. Does this, does any of this help, if you need a mechanism to manage focus, reevaluate that approach, the typical behavior is that the keyboard appears. When the input is focused and hiding it is handled naturally by the system or by dismissing the keyboard.
Again, yeah, that code did that, he said move user effect could blur focus, that code we, it's there to keep the keyboard is up. Like, there's no other way than that, like, yeah, like, remember when we. Wanted to implemented that? And we said like, it's not really an optimal user experience.
Yeah.
And even chat GPT like wanted that, it was like not optimal experience. So we know it was not gonna be perfect, like seems it's causing more problems than it solves. Maybe it's that, if it is.
Right. What about using a conditional autofocus?
Um, okay, as of focus. Well. Off the focus, no, I would, no, oh, I see what you mean, hmm. Hmm, maybe, so why he's saying like it's another approach, how to keep the keyboard up?
Okay.
By handling the has off of focus. That's, so, the reason why I didn't went with this route is. Here he is introducing, you can see that use state. He introduces this use state and. You should be only introducing it when you really, really need it, if there's no other way to ship.
But you stay this false.
Yeah, that's the initial value, like, um, but. Yeah, let me, let me just, uh, finish this all. You want to use this use state only when you really need it, why? Because if this is changes, it causes a re-render. Right?
Okay.
And we only use it when there's no other way, you really need it, there's no other way. I can, I can like make the input focused, autofocus without using it. Because there is like a native function, that's gonna go directly to the native and focuses the input without relying on the use state, or this is like you taking one more step to achieve what you want, where you have it. Probably like I was maybe thinking it like that, because it's gonna be more perfor- performance. Maybe in this case, it's not, we need to do this instead. Maybe, I'm not sure. But you should now introducing one more state, it means one more re-render.
That doesn't sound like simplifying.
Yeah, I know.
What do we do? This is, I'm not an expert on any of this, I just know.
Well, well, again, we did a lot of changes with the eighty-one.
Yeah.
We need more testing for that.
Yeah.
Why, why we waiting for more session replays for that version? We can start with the actionable.
Here's one.
Is it eighty-one?
Yeah, all these will be, any, all these Androids will be.
Okay, and how you know, like, go to the tags?
Because everything is eighty-one now, it's all, it's in the App Store. So.
Okay, can you look in the tags, like tab, we can confirm that from the tags tab.
Right.
Okay, yeah, it's an eighty-one, alright. Okay, can you open the con- the console tab?
Yeah.
Okay, that's very, okay. Let's see.
Typing immediately, like, there's no problem here.
Hmm.
Let's see, there's obviously a problem, he never finishes, so this is Ivana.
But this is live, you can see the tag live?
I do see that, but this, that's also misleading, because it's thirty-eight minutes ago, so I don't know why it says that sometimes.
Hmm.
I think it's done, um, but let's see where they get started. Okay, here, here's, interesting, I saw a tap here below, like where the keyboard is, oftentimes, I don't see any taps in this area. And, well, I don't, maybe? Um. Is this be, this pro, does it have anything to do with the keystroke logging you did? Because.
No, no, we don't, we don't. I don't know what a tap is there, but.
You're typing, you're typing letters, which is good, because what I'm, my point is uh, before eighty-one, I never saw taps in this area.
Oh, the login that I did, it was like, no, it has not, like this, this thing is why the session replay, maybe they did some update on their end. But I didn't do anything to have that there.
Okay, so far this person's having no issue, well, wait, okay, yeah, they're now they're scrolling, okay, good, the little arrows are here, so this person's got all this figured out so far. They're clearly a real human being, they're trying to go forward. Go ahead and skip a hell bit.
Oh.
String.
Did it?
I don't know.
It back?
Yeah, let me go back. Let's see if they tap here. Yep, they did tap back.
Yeah, they tapped back, wow.
Now they tap forward again. Yeah, forward. So they're back on the birthday screen, it's just laggy. No, now they're back on the birth, the name screen.
Okay, we should understand why the user decided to do back, I felt like it was changing his day.
Right. Look at all these, see, this is what I mean. So we watched this one. Um, maybe they had problems in the fir, let's go to the first one, just to see. So this is the very first one.
Is it like eighty-one? Can you check the text?
It's the same user. Eighty-one.
Okay.
This is, anything within the last um, hour, which is only where I looked for session. I filtered by hour, they're all gonna be eighty-one. If it's, if it's onboarding, I had, I'm most likely, it's possible they installed the app three days ago, and then do onboarding right now, it's but, most likely, these are all gonna be eighty-one, and we'll, I'll check them here.
Yeah.
But yeah, so she's got no problem here. Except she put a period, that's not gonna work. I don't know what she's thinking.
In email?
I don't know, people do weird things. Obviously, she figures it out, because like, she got to the birthday school eventually. Okay, so that didn't work. Got it figured it out, yeah, this is the one we watched, where she figured it out. And let's go back, go ahead, and then I'll go back to that one, but, so she went back from the birthday screen for some reason. Seems like this is where this user gives up, maybe?
Maybe it's the session replay, I don't know.
The background in it, I don't know. They tapped here, which then you don't see the cursor.
It is there, just like it's delay, you can see it. Uh, can you play it? It's gonna be there, yeah, cuz like, um.
How do you know? I don't see.
It's, it's, it's here?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just delayed.
Um. Yeah. Okay, so let's go back to the one before, like, yeah, why did they go back from the birthday screen? It's hard to say, cuz like you don't see, you don't see everything.
Okay, can you be in the console tab?
Yeah.
Um, okay. Yeah, um, it's not keeping up with, with the session, can you scroll a little bit more on the console? It says name, yeah, can you scroll more, I need to see. Okay, yeah, you see this first name will change that I'm doing there, these are the logs that I'm doing, and I can tell you, she's really a slow typer.
Okay.
Yeah, just like, because you, you can see every keystroke she's doing, normally, if you type fast, you will see like the first letter. Then you, the next one is gonna be three, four.
Okay, so what's happening here? Um.
She did. Yeah, she did back, like you can see the current step again, it's the name. Um, why? She, it seems like she was trying to change the day.
Is there an issue right here, GraphQL error?
No, that's, that's not related to, to this, like, we're not doing any GraphQL. Um, please here. Um.
And she hit forward again there. Let me pause it, um. It appeared? She pressed forward from here, let me go back. To the birthday screen, where is that? Um. So when she goes back here to the birthday screen. Or sorry to, yeah, wait, to the name screen, I mean, um. Press forward again here. I don't know what's hap, I, I, I think, I don't know what's happening, why, cuz like, it seems like here. Presses forward like right here. So she's pressing forward here. It go, it, the next step is birthday, right, this one?
No, it seems it's lagging, it is lagging.
Yeah, but.
No, like the logs are lagging with what we see in the session replay.
Yeah. And then maybe she went back again, it's hard to say. Because then there's the cursor there. Oh, perhaps this person has a hard time, I mean, the language shouldn't really matter, there's a forward button everywhere, like.
Hmm.
And then they come back a last time. Four different attempts. Maybe this one isn't gonna.
I would not say four attempts, more like, it's one attempt, it's just like the session replays being segmented in four.
Yeah, maybe, let's see, this was at ten thirty AM.
Hmm.
This one's at ten twenty-eight, yeah, so it's within the same, cuz this is like a couple minutes, let's see the one left. Ten twenty-seven, yes, a minute before. So yeah, it's kind of going back and forth. But it's a lot of attempting through several minutes. And then the final attempt. Back on the name screen.
She was like in the app in like four or three minutes, two, five, five minutes, maybe in total here. It should be like already on boarded.
Right, hmm. Yes, that's just that one. Here's another one, um, wait, that's the one I was already looking at. So these are all within the last hour, um, this person made it in. Maybe that's all I meant.
And that's a US phone number?
No, plus nine-one.
Uh, nine-one, yeah, true, maybe, yeah.
But, um, here's one, forty-one seconds.
It's the same user we've been looking at.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Are they all, wait, are you sure? No, this one's different, oh, yeah, the, the CB.
Yeah, this is what you, you pressed on, yeah, there's four of them.
Yeah, here's one, uh, on.
This is iOS, yeah.
Um, but let's see, if there's anything to, see. At least we know where they're from. This is, this is basically Sacramento area, this is like around here.
Wait, wait, wait. This, yeah, this is older version, because like I, I reverted the.
Well, no, we, we didn't release eighty-one.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Uh, cuz there was that phone number issue, but, um. Yeah, kind of hard to tell what's happening here. Um. But they didn't make it in. This is nineteen minutes ago. Maybe they made it in on this attempt. Don't know what happened there, but you, in that, in the last hour, there's all these attempts, this one's a repeat, one, two, three, four, and this is two repeats, but you can see like more people did not make it in and made it in, and this was not, this is not onboarding, this guy, I don't know, this one always says onboarding, but it's not, like, recognizes phone number, he's got like a two-hundred-day streak, so this one doesn't count, so this is the only one that made it in in the last hour. And let's see, I bet it's a newer Samsung, find out. Opo, is this, this might be, I think this is, is this you, Amen?
It might be typing his name in the, yeah, India, yeah, he's him, yeah.
Why is it that everybody on our team always has no problem, but then every time I look, it's Amen, as I suspected, so. It makes it really hard to identify problems when everybody we know breezes through, no problem, but then every time I look at a session replay, it's nothing but problems for other users, I don't get it. You had no problems, Amen?
Yeah, I don't have any problems, I log, onboarded.
Yeah, but this is also Android fifteen on a newer device, so that's the thing, it's the older devices that are the problems. What, you didn't have any problems on it? Where, where did the code, where's the code?
Uh, code added from the SMS.
Okay, and you typed it in?
Yes. Yeah, so just, I will take the older Android device tomorrow, then I will test on it.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an IP, so I will take it from my friend.
Okay.
Older Android.
Okay. This is eighty-one, yeah. Did you try, um, pressing between these and back and forth a lot?
Back and forth, yeah. I tried to type it name there, yeah. Then after, uh, forward and press forward button.
This is new one, let's go to it. These are all so short. Three seconds, one second, doesn't help at all. This is eight hours ago. This is seventy-nine. Did he enter the wrong digits? See, this is what I mean by like is there a keyboard here? Um.
Yeah, I mean, it should be.
He's on Android nine, okay, so this is gonna be really old operating system. He entered the phone number here. And got an error, maybe entered the numbers wrong, right, cuz it says wrong digits, okay? So it seems now he's having trouble, watch where he taps. It seems now, he's having trouble, watch where he taps. He's like trying to swipe. Try to tap up on this loty, he's gonna hit the resend code button. Okay, he's tapping up here, up here, swiping up here, up here, like can't get. Like there's no more numbers being typed, why not? Forward, don't, there's no code, it's like, where's your keyboard dude, like, why, why, why would this guy not one time? Tap on the keyboard. There's no keyboard. There's no way, that I've seen this a million times, this is a random one I picked from eight hours ago, there's no keyboard here.
Oh, maybe it's the other issue, um. Um, it, it was like an issue, but not related with this alert that the user just saw, I don't like, I totally like, there's an issue.
Yeah, this modal here?
Yeah, this model here, if the user press okay on it before he.
But it doesn't, like he does, watch.
I know, I know, but like it was another model.
And just get a clear view, okay, so. Forward from the name. It's really weird, like, it goes right to there, like, what is that, how does that even happen? Where's the phone?
It is just a sister play like, uh, as gaps, cuz.
Remember we're doing authentication without, oh yeah, that's build eighty-one, right, where you don't. Code?
Yeah.
But, wow, doesn't it seem weird though that?
There again?
Yeah, he's on the name here.
It's, it's gonna be this issue be for sure, like, can you go to the console?
Yeah, actually, hold on, let me see how many other attempts, okay, we're on the first, there was a second attempt, but I guess.
It's the same attempt, like, because the other one it has five seconds, it should be included in this one, but it's not.
Sometimes, sometimes there's an hour between those, but we'll, we'll see.
There's no way, like, there's no way it did next now in here, in here, like, is this issue replay that it's lagging, it's like the gabs.
But you can see where he taps.
Yeah, he tapped, now he's in it, because, um, sister replay did not got the other frames, um.
Yeah, he just tapped here. Um, just tapped here.
Also, normally, we don't have a model like this. Right?
Just tapped here.
You can see how it looks bad, he, it's just houses.
It would be, I know, it would be like a normal square, so now he tapped up here. Why did that, did that really take that long? Look, is, is that real? Like, it seems real, because there's no, there's no inputs, no nothing, he tapped up here cuz he's like, what the hell's going on? Then, he taps, or no, he doesn't do anything, it then shows up, that was very delayed, then. He taps the forward button, cuz there's probably no keyboard.
Probably, hmm, okay, can, um, oh yeah, this is an old version, I don't know, um, okay. Now we start typing, now you get it, where's the keyboard coming from?
I don't know.
It was there, it's just like it was, I don't know, okay, didn't, let's see, before he start typing.
Yeah, maybe it didn't show up until this all showed up.
Well, the keyboard has nothing to do with the buttons, it the input, it's all, the keyboard is always bound to the input.
Well, how is it that there's nothing here? And then, all of a sudden, there is, right?
Also like this delay, I would say it's the, this is really, we don't have things be delayed like this.
Unless the keyboard came up, cuz like he was trying to type, but there was nothing to type, and then here, now the keyboard comes up.
Well, okay, let's see the keyboard comes up now, about why he did press on the next button. No, well, maybe that's why he understood, but like, no, I'm saying, like, if you, what you're saying is true, then why he pressing the, on the button? On the next button, if the keyboard is there.
I don't know.
Yeah, um.
It really seems like it's not here.
But he's.
Where they tap, eh, up here, but I never see a tap down here.
Maybe they want, maybe they want to dismiss the keyboard, maybe.
Maybe, like, everything's up above, not one tap, not one try. Not one digit down here, with all the tapping and swiping, it's weird. And then, that's it, but he does come back to try again, okay, so that was at two fifty-six AM. For a few seconds. Uh, two fifty-eight AM, that's two minutes later, but that might be because it was a two-minute session replay, and then.
Yeah, this, this session replay, it should be included in the other one, it's just like, it's a segment, that's. Not.
Oh, is that seven second, it's, it's at ten seconds here, let's see where it left off. Yeah, it's at ten seconds, it looks like.
Yeah, it's, it's the rest of this.
Yeah, so it's about second delay, but, um. But no, um, numbers being typed at all. And don't forget, it's, uh, Android OS nine. So really old, which is where I'm seeing a lot of issues, so like, the older ones like ten, nine, um. It's the same guy here, no, it's a different guy. This is South Africa, Android ten. Is there a keyboard here? See, like, I see this so often, are they, they don't want.
So from the, their keyboard, there is like a done button or something that should, well, because how, how do you get the? Oh, no, no, no. That button, it really looks gray, it's still pressable.
I know that, yeah, that's why these red errors occur.
Yeah, so the user, oh, so, so you're saying the user did type and press the button, but nothing was visual there?
Right, I think either that or there's no keyboard at all, and then they don't have any option but the forward button.
Well. Maybe we wait more, because like I did, uh, this login thingy, if the user really, we, I log every keystroke. So we know if the user typing or not.
Then I'm gonna turn on more, I'm gonna get more ads running. I need to close some of these windows. This one, thank you, um. I can get more users real fast, if I unpause this campaign. Like, this is yesterday, but if you look at the last thirty days. Ten thousand installs, ten thousand. It's sixty-two thousand clicks, so, yeah, we're not seeing ten thousand users. But a lot of people download and don't even like, open the app, which is really weird, I don't understand that, but so many open it. And then, don't see. Um, don't get past the name screen, or don't get past the phone authentication, so me unpausing this right now, we will start seeing downloads in a few minutes. Um, from all over the world, mostly South Africa and Jamaica, but. Yeah, um, I don't think I really got much yesterday, I had it off yesterday.